Seems like everyone is here. So with that said, we will go ahead and open up our meeting. Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming this evening to tonight's meeting. For the month of August. I know it's summertime, everybody would prefer to be outside in the sun. So I thank you for your commitment to the work that we are doing here. Uh, on interpreter licensures. Thank you to the community for also watching and making sure that we are progressing as needed. Our agenda for this evening. Uh, we have sent that out. It was available online ahead of this meeting. We did want to have some discussions as we're in regards to the regulations tonight. And we will start with first, who would like to make a motion on the agenda? Anybody making a motion?
Member Franklin, I propose to submit the agenda.
Do I have a second? All right, any discussion? All right, then we'll move forward with the vote. All in favor, please raise your hands. And the motion passes all in assent. All right, has anybody been able to read the meeting minutes from our past meeting? All right, would they may like to make a motion to approve said minutes as read?
Vice Chair makes a motion to approve the minutes.
I see Paige is seconded, thank you. All right, seems like we'll have no discussion. Though we'll move forward with voting in support of the motion for meetings minutes as read. And it passes with all. Saying I. Now, let's dive into the regulations that we are looking at tonight. Before we jump in, I would like to first explain to the committee writ large a little bit about the history. And the function of this board in regards to the regulations as well. This board was established in twenty twenty-three, oh, late twenty twenty-three. And we have been working persistently and diligently on this effort. Going through the required processes. There have been a lot of changes and revisions through the years. As part of said process. Now, in the past, uh, we have, we had decided on looking at specializations for licensures and we've realized that. It was not the right time, it was not a good time at that moment in time to go ahead and move forward with those, those specialty licenses. So instead. We have written regulations that are a little bit more simplified. They're a little bit easier for all of us to adhere to. For as the deaf and, uh, the deaf community as well as the interpreting community will, you know, make sure that we are able to have these. As our norms and we also have made some regulation revisions. And we've been doing some research as part of that, research in regards to various aspects from. Ex- external states, their stakeholders and different things of that nature. We want to be mindful of the deaf communities' needs in this process as well. That is absolutely mission critical. So with our revisions, we have done so with that in mind. We sent those out to the communities. And there were open a public comment period of thirty days. We recently had our July tenth board meeting to discuss some revisions based on those. Uh, comments that we received, made some revisions and changes there of the board. And then also we reviewed all of said comments that we received, including. A letter that we did receive from various different entities across the state, different organizations that wanted to have their voices heard. The Maryland Association of the Board of Educators was one said group. There is, uh, again, letters from the court and judiciary as well as, again, various other members of the community. And really, thank you for your time and support with the board in our revisions of the regulations. And getting us to where we are today because without the community's involvement. We honestly could not be doing this work without you. And so thank you so much for the interpreting community, the deaf community, the deaf blind community, and overall everyone involved up to this point. So I want to clarify with the community as well, there have been some. Discussions in regards to licensure requirements. And we have three hard licenses. Agency license as well would be a fourth, uh, category. However, we're going to focus on the individual requirements of interpreters. There's the general license requirement, so it requires certification, national or regional. And we also have the option of R I D, B I, N A D certification, again, for that general license or full license. Then we also have a provisional license that requires the pass of a written exam. And the ethics exam for the national certification, that would be for the general provisional license. And then we also have a provisional educational license. This requires the passing of a written exam. As well as a E I P A three point seven or above as a minimum requirement, three point seven, as was discussed in the last meeting. So again, just want to clear that up with the community that there are only three licenses for which interpreters will be applying at this time. So we have simplified that for the community and I want to make sure that that is understood. All right, seems like we have general assent. With the history, so we are going to dive into these regulations. Now, I did look through some of the regulations and revisions, comments, feedbacks, et cetera, that were suggested and some that we've done, we put through. Some of those revisions and we'll go through some of them tonight and we'll be showing them section by section as the, and then once we have shown that revision section. We will then hold off that, uh, content from shared screen, have a discussion and proceed with that. Tasting throughout the rest of this meeting until we complete regulation discussions. All right, so. We're gonna go ahead and start with the definitions. All right, let's see. You see E right here highlighted in this sort of blob purple color? Want to make sure everybody has had a chance to read it. Board, are we finished with the reading of this specific section, Sue? All right, perfect. Thank you for confirming that everybody's read them. All right, so again, the definition of an agency in this instance, we've had a lot of public comments asking for clarification on what the meaning of agency is, what definition we are using. Uh, you know, whether it's an agency with staff interpreters, a school that has staff interpreters. Yeah, and again, so in this instance, we wanted to clarify that that doesn't necessarily apply to those entities, specifically schools, hospitals. Or those local entities. Those do not need an agency license, so we want to make that clear. I want to make sure that everyone feels that language is clear. Do we feel like we need more discussion in this regard? Leslie, I see you have your hand up.
I have a comment, um, so for queued speech. So I am a female with a black shirt and a blue jacket. Um, so for federal agencies, I believe it applies to agencies, only agencies. Like Jacob mentioned, for example, a school, a hospital. And a federal agency because they, their hiring, um, procedures are different. So I just wanted to provide some. Some added comment to that.
This is Chair Lefler. Thank you, uh, Vice Chair Puzio, I appreciate that. All right, moving forward before I forget to mention it. Uh, I would like to let you know that many of the public comments that we have reviewed, the board. Has done so, including some letters from, again, those various entities that I mentioned before in that historical. Sort of portion of this. And now, these agencies and organizations don't have any sort of legislative authority in this regard, so we are trying our best. With our authority as invested by the law as codified to establish these regulations, uh, under pursuant to the law. So I want to make sure that everybody has that. Understanding of where we're coming from. And I'd like to move on to the next section, which is educational interpreters. And what we mean by this specific context.
Do you mind going back and clarifying again, this is Vice Chair Puzio, to clarify that we don't have the authority, um, what? The comment that you were just making about we not having the authority.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so there are some comments about specific items that people want to see happen within regulations. For instance, Maryland Association of Board of Educators, uh, they had sent a letter to us. In regards to. So one, one year temporary educational licensure. Established a pipeline of training for and educational interpreters, wanting us to partner with. Uh, the education departments and boards and things of that nature. And unfortunately, we don't have the authority to do that. Uh, based on the current laws as they are written.
Great, thank you. This is Vice Chair Puzio.
Back into the regs in regards to educational settings and what we mean by that, just to clarify some of the terminology that we're using in said regulation. All right, has everybody had a chance to read this? All right, seeing general assent. Do we wish to have any further discussion on this part of the regulations? All right, moving on to the next section.
Member Franklin says, okay.
All right, does everybody had a chance to read this? In general assent. So we have changed this lan- uh, language here just to clarify that. Whoever has a full license may, or general license may work within any setting within the state of Maryland, including educational settings, hospitals, legal. Uh, community settings. Medical, the entire gamut of any setting in which interpreters may be utilized. Are there any more discussions that may be necessary?
Vice Chair. Puzio, um, not necessarily further discussion, but a big part of the public comment. We did see. Um, prior to getting to this point. What was required for specialty license and we have decided to hold off on the specialty licensure. Until later, um. So this means that the board, yes, we can set up a specialty license, but there has been some confusion with the community. Um, so we are not removing the specialty license language, we are removing it for now. We want to keep things simple for right now. So that's why you see the language that says that this is being removed at this time and that we may revisit this later. And that is due to the public comment.
Thank you, this is Chair Lefler. Any further comments? None. Has everybody had a chance to read the language? All right, seeing general assent, let me pull it down. Okay. So this has been been changes based on the board, uh, from July tenth, where we agreed to go ahead and make the revision as stated. Any more discussion that is needed on this matter? Seeing none, we'll move towards the fees. Now, we did get a number of comments from the public in regards to the fees of the board was considering. Uh, and a variety of different factors involved in there. So we looked at other states to see what. Uh, fees they were assessing on the communities that were applying for licensure, and so more on that now. Has everybody had a chance to read these regulations as written? Let me remove these from the screen. Okay, with that section, we did add, for example, the educational interpreters. That specialty license was two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So that was one of the main additions there. And then for, again, the renewals of interpreter license, it was a hundred and fifty dollars for two years. And then two hundred and twenty, uh, sorry, excuse the interpreter.
Sue, you have a comment?
I'm sorry. Sorry, Sue, there's interpreter. Two hundred and twenty-five dollars for a three-year license. And again, there's initial two years that can be attained through a one hundred and fifty dollar renewal. Thank you for the clarification.
Remember, Sue? The fees were a huge concern from, coming from the interpreting community. Because this is one setting that they're working in. Um, part of me feels like two hundred and twenty-five dollars is still somewhat steep. They can only work in one setting for the educational provisional license. If they're working under the general license, they can work in various settings. And so is it really fair to charge two hundred and twenty-five dollars? Um, should we consider reducing that cost? Uh, also, we cannot control the timeline for the results as well. I'm just kind of thinking that maybe we should consider reducing that fee. Uh, further, so I'm open to other thought, others thoughts and opinions on that. Leslie? This is Vice Chair Puzio, uh, agreed. I think that when we were looking at different things, um, cost per year with general license. And that is per the general or the regional license, uh, certification. So it's reduced to a hundred dollars for the provisional. Understand that. That could be. That could be in any setting, but not medical. Um, but you cannot be in mental health or educational without a mentor. And then it was seventy-five dollars for. The educational, so it does seem to be tapered. I don't mind having a discussion, but it was also considered. And taking a look at how much, how many opportunities there are and when we talk about. Uh, enough work, whereas provisional licensure. You know, does that, does that pose a, a situation where they, there is enough work for that? Um, member Franklin? So what is? What amount are you proposing, Susan, when you say that possibly reducing it? Um, so to go from. Two hundred and twenty-five reduced to, what are your thoughts? Um, I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Susan? I know that. Sorry, I'm just thinking through three years. So I'm thinking that if I remember. From the Maryland Association of the Board of Educators, it was fifty dollars for three years. Um, and that is not. I'm not sure what wording to use. I mean, I think that is quite inexpensive for the three-year mark. Um, so maybe somewhere between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy-five. Because we're also adding that prorating. So if we. So if you have an educational interpreter. And they do obtain their national certification prior to the three years, then their fee is prorated. And it is, uh, it migrates over to the general license fee. So I think that. There should be some sort of consideration. Nominally. Um, so. Maybe reducing it to two hundred dollars. I'm not sure. This is Vice Chair Puzio. Again. Reducing that two hundred and twenty-five dollar fee is fine, but I think when we talk about calculating. We need to, we do need to consider the three-year piece because. If it's seventy-five dollars a year over the course of three years, that's half of the general cost. Because the general is one fifty. And then, so if, for example, let's. Let's say someone already has a score of three point seven for the E I P A. And then they pass the knowledge and ethical exam. And then they sit for the performance nick. And then that cost, that hundred and fifty dollars can transfer. Um, I mean, technically. We don't technically have to. Um, make it even amounts. Because O D H H will. Manage the cost, so whether it's the fifty cent division or the seventy-five cent division. So if you're going from two hundred and twenty-five, what is the next? Uh, amount that is easier to divide. So if you think about it, two hundred dollars doesn't divide by three easily. So you could do eight, a hundred and eighty, because divided by three, then you divide that and, and you get sixty.
This is Chair Lefler. So Sue, uh, it seems like you'd like to maybe. Propose a reduced fee and that's fine, we can definitely do so. Uh, would you like it to be reduced to one fifty, one eighty? Do you have any specific preference? Uh, of what you'd like the board to consider?
Uh, this is member Franklin. Um, so do you propose that we set? It seems that, uh, Vice Chair Puzio. Proposed that we set an amount that's easily divided by three. So the two twenty-five does not divide by three easily. Well, and she was, and this is Vice Chair Puzio. If it's two hundred and twenty-five, that means that you have three factors of seventy-five each. If you go to two ten, then that would be three factors of seventy, or if you went to one eighty, it would be three factors of sixty. You go down to one fifty, three factors of fifty. So I think that you can honor that. And, um. I think a hundred and eighty is a good balance. And a good concession.
So this is Chair Lefler. Would somebody like to make a motion to change the fee to a hundred and eighty dollars?
So this is member Beaver. I propose to reduce the fee. To a hundred and eighty dollars for a three-year provisional license for educational interpreters.
Who do we have for a second?
And then Vice Chair Puzio will second.
All right, it seems like we don't need any further discussion as we just had it. So all in, in favor of supporting the motion as. One hundred and eighty dollars for the educational interpreters three-year period. I see all have assented and raise their hands in eye. Are you okay, Sue? I'm just checking.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm just, I have a little coughing fit, just.
Okay, so one hundred and eighty dollars and then. For the renewal of two year, do we want to keep it at the same amount, the one hundred?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion in regards to the fees at this time? None? We'll move on to the next section for discussion. All right, I want to make sure everybody can see my highlighted section of the regulations here. Has everybody had a chance to read these as they are written and highlighted? Okay, seeing general assent. I do want to discuss this part. I do feel it's very germane and important for us to have some discussions in regards to those regulations as written. Right now, provisional licensed individuals. Are banned from interpreting in legal settings, completely. So we have that clearly stated, within medical settings or behavioral health settings, they must be with a teamed mentor. Or a team, uh, that's as the law is written. Or regulations. So, do we want to have a proposal for educational and settings to have that same setting? Set up of a mentor with the individual. So provisional license and general license setting, uh, going into an educational setting, working with a mentor. Or a team. Anybody have thoughts on that? Uh, yes, Leslie?
Vice Chair Puzio. Um, I apologize, I was nodding my head but not sounding anything. Um, I. I have feelings against allowing a provisional. Um, a person with a provisional license to enter an educational setting. Uh, with the provisional, they're only taking the knowledge exam and the, the knowledge and ethical exam, excuse me. Um, so I think there is a large concern. Um, and I think that this would. Amass the deaf community. Um, we need to have certain protections in place. For our youth and our children, um, in the educational settings. It's so much more than just interpreting one, one language to another when it comes to the educational setting. Um, so I feel that, um, if there is an individual with a provisional license, they have to have a mentor with them if they're going to be in an educational setting.
This is Chair Lefler. Paige or Sue, any comments?
Uh, yes. I have mixed feelings about that. Because the castley written exam. Has a performance. And it also has the knowledge and ethical, but it is not specific to educational, uh, settings with. Providing services for children. Um. With the E I P A. I'm concerned about the timeline with the E I P A in getting the results because that does include. Um, more specific assessment. For an educational interpreter, but if you're taking the. Written test and then you go to take the performance exam and then you're waiting. And if it's after January first, twenty twenty-six and you still don't have, oh, excuse me, July of twenty twenty-six and you still don't have your results. Then. How are folks supposed to achieve their national certification if we don't allow? Um, those who have passed their castley written exam to work in an educational center. I mean, I. Do understand the concern. I've worked in the educational system for many, many years. Most things that are missed in the school system. Relates to, uh, the ethical piece. Uh, and I think that the written exam does focus on the ethics. Um. Again, I have mixed feelings about it, so. This is Vice Chair Puzio. I understand your comments and as far as your reference to the knowledge and performance exam. But from what I've heard. The knowledge. And ethical test is for, um, they provide the questions. And you can read the question and sign the question. It's the same question. So that means that. You must have receptive skills in an academic setting, but when you're interpreting for children, I feel like that. Is a different situation. Um. Also, when. If we talk about the conversations that we have seen repeat over and over. Um. So they are, uh, cer- uh, certain interpreters are not exempt from taking the.
from taking the performance exam. I think that technically it starts July first of twenty-twenty-six, but most school years don't start until the middle of August. So technically, they would actually have thirteen, a thirteen-month extension to receive um these results.
This is Chair Lefler. Now, I do understand uh Vice Chair Puzio's comments. And we also have to understand the facts of the matter when it comes to educational interpreters. If someone wants to take on a position of interpreting, they want to take the written test, they want to take that portion and pass the educational performance and then take the, the performance test. And say they take it in April of twenty-twenty-seven, they're gonna have to wait for more than potentially a year for their results. Uh they could then take the Cassley exam, get the results from that in just a few days potentially, and then be out interpreting in school settings. Which is better? I guess the question is, if we don't have any interpreters or if we have those sort of provisional interpreters or you know, they, they, if we don't allow those Cassley tested individuals to come in. So I'm concerned in regards to educational interpreters, the passing of the written test, but then waiting an additional year for their three-point-seven or above or uh results. And we can't really blame them on the deficiencies of that rating system. So again, it's not a, a fast turnaround for them to get their results. And so there is a concern of that turnaround time. So I guess, I'm looking at it. Oof, okay. Yes, it's a small group, number of interpreters, but we're also trying to figure out how we can maintain our interpreter. Uh whether it comes in the opportunities as well as the cohort available to state of Maryland. Leslie?
Vice Chair Puzia. I'm, um, I'm sorry, I'm still gonna fight on this topic. Um I think this does. Um, this definitely invites a more in-depth conversation. I think that the Cassley um is giving uh a two or three-week turnaround time for the ethics. And then uh when you talk about the EIPA and when you talk about the performance exam. But then when you talk about young children and the educational setting, it's the same as if the Cassley gives the knowledge exam and then you pass that and then you would have, you would require a mentor uh be present. There's not a lot of difference between that and the EIPA. Because you're talking about the difference between English proficiency or um you're talking about um language um proficiency, you're talking, you're talking about content uh related to birth to twenty-one. The population that is being served from birth to twenty-one. So it would be like, do we want to allow interpreters who are not qualified to interpret for child, for children because the pool of interpreters is shrinking? Or there's a barrier to interpreters um? In the system, in the school system, you see that we want to raise the standard. Because we want, because we've received a lot of comments from meta, uh from educational interpreters wanting to remove the bachelor's degree requirement. So that means that the school system sees us as in the professional field, not requiring, not having an educational requirement. By having that degreed requirement, you're having funding from the school system, but we're, but then we're not allowing educational interpreters um who have a provisional license. Um we're getting more funding and, and those working as interpreters. Um we're already seeing verification and proof of of, of like, of challenges in language.
Yes, and this is Chair Lefler. I think that is something that all the entire community can understand and agree to when you're talking about the benefits of having. Uh you know, that bachelor program to support educational interpreter requirements, but we also have consultations in which we are, need to have discussions. Uh when it comes to rural locations and individuals who live on the eastern shore within west, western Maryland. I mean, that possibility of interpreter availability is real and you know, Cassley is working on, uh you know, their national certification or, or rather, people are working in those areas to uh up the number of interpreters with that certification. But uh if they have that national certification, do we not want them to also be in public schools? So for example, in southern Maryland, I do know of one or two certified interpreters. Nationally certified, and there are three other interpreters in the area. They're working on their Cassley tests and having that full uh certification from the national organization. Uh and they, those general interpreters are working in, in a variety of settings. But if we are saying then they can't then work in educational settings with a provisional license, what happens to those children? Do we leave them behind? So that's a flip side of the coin. We don't necessarily want to limit everything to the EIPA only for provisional license, or do we?
This is uh Vice Chair Leslie. I don't think we're limiting it to the EIPA. We're not allowing even those with the provisional general to work in these educational settings involving young children. Um I think it's really important to remember um who are the biggest advocates. These are the parents of these deaf children. And it's not to say that we are not listening to educational interpreters. But their perspective is coming from work opportunity. And historically, we want to be hearing from and listening, listening to the concerns from parents of deaf children. And their concern has been that three-point-seven has been too low of a score. And they have advocated for, for four-point-zero and advocated for um mentors being required. Um so I think that as far as encompassing all of those in the community, the those who are most highly invested in the education of these children who are deaf. Um we are talking about the parents, in my opinion, in my strong opinion.
This is Chair Lefler. Any other considerations that people would like to bring to the forefront?
I do agree with the comments um that Vice Chair Puzio uh made. Yes, we do um cherish our um younger educational are, our students in the education system, and we want what's best for them. We absolutely do. Uh Jacob had a good point about in rural areas. I mean, I live in a rural area. And if we make it so restrictive, I am afraid that we are losing interpreters in the profession. I know that we have interpreters in this area who are working diligently to uh reach their certification so that they can meet the requirements. They are diligently pursuing workshops and all of these opportunities to obtain their certification. For myself, I think that um when I took the RID test and passed and obtained my certification, at the time, it was a pass fail at the time and it was cut and dry like that. But the EIPA was able to deliver my strengths, my weaknesses. That feedback was extremely, extremely valuable because I could hone my skills and improve and work on those skills. So I am struggling with this one. I'm just being honest. I'm struggling with this one because I also have a concern too in individuals passing the Cassley exam and they only have up to five years to get that done. So during that time that they are pursuing that and i- in meeting that requirement, what happens to these students, these young students in our educational system? Um the five years, that five years of wait, that waiting period. These children who are deaf. What do we? Yeah. How are they affected?
This is Chair Lefler. I think we can hold that conversation maybe if we would like. Oh, Leslie?
Uh, this is Vice Chair Puzio. Um I would like to hear your comments um and your thoughts because I understand that you are facilitating this conversation, but what are your thoughts? Because you are, I would like to see, I would like to hear your perspective.
Thank you. I'm looking as deaf children, their access to language and interpreters is absolutely critical. And I want to definitely support the EIPA and the needs of those interpreters when it comes to having the EIPA written test as well as the three-point-seven minimum requirement. When it comes to Casly, passing the written test, are we then assuming that that is with the expectation that they could then also be sign language proficient? Or would they be rudimentary at best? What's the, the assumption there? With Casly, the expectation is really that they would be more proficient rather than simply uh signers, but closer to proficient language users.
Vice Chair Puzio, if you don't mind if I just jump in and comment on that. Um the Cassley with the knowledge and, and ethics exam, it's, you are reading and writing. Um you have an option to read uh the question and so that is being presented in sign as well. So there is no assessment of performance in sign language. Um re- honestly, we don't even have to call them interpreters because honestly, any individual could sit for that exam. It is no requirement to sit for the exam. My son could sit for this exam. But if you miss, if, or if your receptive skill, skills are not up to par to receive the questions receptively, then you can read the questions. So there is not a sign language proficiency qualification to sit for that exam.
Okay, so then maybe the board, the board should encourage national and regional certifications. You know, we, we're encouraging people to get those, but we should also then be thinking about heritage language users like COTAs, people who have grown up with deaf community members near them have taken, you know, the Cassley written test and then looking to later become certified. So in working with intercober across the state of Maryland, we do not want to be restrictive to who can be necessarily working in a school setting if they have the ability to have a licensed mentor. We want to provide them opportunities for feedback and exposure in those settings potentially. So I think, for example, if I myself were a hearing person and I wanted to work within the educational setting, I took the EIPA, uh the written and passed that. I put all my money and, and, and took all the time to wait for my results. Where would I get my exposure in that time? Whereas if I took the Cassley test, right, the written and knowledge, then I can get out there. I can start to have those, but we have essentially put the educational interpreters waiting for the results of their EIPA scores in a holding pattern where they are not going to be exposed to various different settings that the Cassley interpreters, you know, written past uh written test interpreters would be able to then have. You know, again, I'm going back to South Maryland and I've had conversations with the deaf community there, with the interpreting community there. Again, I'm only talking about in South Maryland, there's only one certified interpreter, period. That's it. One single individual who is certified. And how many other interpreters in the area are not certified? I do not know that, but there's one working within that area within the school system. And now you know, what we're looking at, we're saying if you have Casly, if you have a NIC, you know, a written test, then you can't have access to the educational setting. And then also, if you don't have your scores yet for the EIPA, you can't have access to that setting. And if you do get it, you only have access to one setting. So with Casly, uh you know, would we want to have those educate, those interpreters in educational sites? We want to allow that. And again, I think going back to the Casling sense, you're right, there is no assessment of their performance skills and that is a grave concern. So what happens with the EIPA? They are assessed by their school. As Sue said, it's absolutely invaluable feedback that they like to see it, but we also want to see that four-point-O. So we hope in the future with the changes in technology, we can also see people getting licensing, you know, in a full level at four-point-O and we wouldn't necessarily even need to consider provisional below a level of four-point-O. That would be the end state we're looking at. But I do have mixed feelings about how we want to support the deaf community and increasing those standards when at the same time, you know, we're causing that holding pattern to exist, whereas then with the Casly system and the general interpreting side of things, they get to have all of those immersive experiences. So I mean, it's difficult. I, I, I'm kind of belated to point on quite a bit. So Paige, I see your hands are up.
This is member Franklin. Um I don't know enough about the educational interpreting specialty to contribute valuably to this discussion. However, one thing we do know is that all of us know that nationally there is a shortage of interpreters, right? We all have mentioned that. And there's a lot of competition for interpreters. So if we implement restrictions and the interpreters understand that, we do run the risk of them flocking to these other areas where the, where the standards and the restrictions are more lax. This is Vice Chair Puzio. So I'm just gonna kind of play dad devil's advocate. So I think ethically, we need to we, we need to, we, if we say the EIPA written is not good enough, then we, if we require a language proficiency, language proficiency, then so they could possibly, the interpreter could possibly move through the interpreting profession and not be assessed on their sign language. So they pass their, their ethical exam, their written and ethical exam through Cassley. And then they have to have a um a certified mentor um with them.
This is Chair Lefler. As we've discussed before with other members of the board in the past, you know, you're, we're talking about a written and performance exam. They being done together. With the EIPA, the written exam has no performance component to it, whereas Casly has both together. And I, I remember in the, in the past, we, oh.
So performance does not necessarily mean, it means that they sign the question, they provide the question in sign language. So with the Cassley ethical and written exam, you can select whether you are reading and writing question, or you can select uh the question being signed to you. Um so let me just repair the uh interpretation. Thank you so much.
Yes, so thank you. Yeah, so we have in our discussion, having a three-point-seven EIPA within an educational setting. Do we want to look at changing that? I mean, I'm open to any ideas that the board would like to entertain at this time on how we can address the shortage.
This is member Franklin. So I have a question. So why is an RID certification not sufficient enough for a educational interpreter um in that specialty setting? It's not so much that our, this is uh Vice Chair Puzio, it's not so much that it's not good enough. You have to pass both parts before you can sit for the performance exam. There are two parts. So the National Interpreter Certification, the NIC, or the CDI Certification for Deaf Interpreters Exam. The, if you pass the performance exam, then you receive your national certification. Prior to being able to take your performance exam, you must, it is required that you must uh take and pass your knowledge and ethical exam. So the, it discusses the code of professional conduct. Um it is not necessarily a test on your skills of interpreting itself. There is a difference in content there.
This is Chair Lefler. I know this is a difficult conversation. Uh it's one that requires considerations to make a decision. I would like to kind of throw out some ideas. I don't intend this to be something that's, to say I'm advocating for or that I'm uh advocating against. I just want to have sort of a brainstorming on this in regards to provisional and the five-year plan. So provisional is
Right, but we say up to five years.
Okay, so we have three years for them to, uh you know, after they've taken the EIPA written. So then would we maybe want to have a renewal? Uh after they've taken the written, what does that look like then? Because right now, in our current regulations, it says that an educational interpreter would pass the EIPA written as well as attain a three-point-seven or above score. So again, these are two statuses required, but for a general provisional license interpreter, they would have two more years. Uh they are, rather they'd be required to have their CEUs similarly after they pass their written. So do we want to have the written test for? a provisional, sorry, provisional educational interpreter had to pass the written test and then require an EIPA 3.7 renewal? To help support them in their journey to elevating their skills to a fully licensed status later? I'm just, again, throwing out ideas on what may help. Uh, Vice Chair Puzio?
I understand the perspective. That could say that a parent, a college student could take ASL 1 and then sign with not proficiency and take their written exam and then be uh, and then be in a classroom interpreting for children with a certified mentor in a classroom. Right now, most of our county does not have the 3.7 requirement or higher. And and there is a struggle for students with education in their language. The percentage of access, um, I think, remind me, I think that a 3.5 is equivalent to 60% access. So that is not even touching like their access of gaining knowledge to the education, to their education. I mean, so if we're talking about below that, that's awful. So that's 3.5. So in reality, there's no difference between the CASL knowledge exam and the EIPA written exam. Except for the fact that CASL talks about the interpreting profession itself. Uh, like when, when was RID established and what are the type, four types of interpreting models? And when was uh this and that conference? And uh, what do you know about scheduling interpreters? What is the first thing that you need to know when you schedule an interpreter? So I mean, these are the things at play here. However, I mean, it is a good point. Um, we can say, okay, you passed your written, you passed your EIPA written, and then I think it's valuable to um, the Maryland Associate of Board of, the Board of Educators in their letter that they mention, um, they want us to consider offering a year of not provisional.
Yes, it was temporary.
Yes, so they, so a temporary. So we did consider that, but but then we didn't have the authority to grant that.
Right.
So in reality, we're already trying to see how better to support educational interpreters while they are on track to become qualified interpreters, but we really can't. Um, do we wipe out all of the requirements or do we do we not hear from the community? Because there's many community members who are interpreters who do not, who are against the 3.7 standard. Um, but we have parents of children who are deaf that want higher than that.
This is Chair Lefler, and something else to consider is if there are no qualified interpreters at all, then we are committing to that child having access to no language, to no education. So how do we make sure that we address that situation of absolutely zero interpreters? I, I, I'm struggling with this. I do we want to, I, I just, I'm not sure because we need to make a decision on either we accept the general provisional license interpreters within education settings or no. I think we need to make that decision because we are submitting the regulations with provisions and we should have said provisions in there.
So maybe someone needs to make a motion and then we'll see what the voting looks like.
Say that again, Leslie.
So maybe we need to have a discussion about, um, like if someone makes a, uh, proposes a motion to accept the CASL written exam, knowledge exam um for provisional license and then requires a certified mentor if they are in the classroom. We could present that for a vote and see where that takes us.
We could, but my question is also would the school systems then support two interpreters? I don't know if they would. If you're talking about Eastern Shore, rural Maryland, we don't have enough certified licensed interpreters or potential licensed interpreters with this current thing. So we have to consider what do we do in these settings where we're de facto restricting all access?
Member Beaver. Uh, honestly, I mean, I work in the school system and I'm in the minority. I mean, in the rural areas, it would almost be impossible to uh meet the requirement of having a certified mentor in the classroom. Um, I cannot speak for the larger counties, I cannot. However, I just know that in the Eastern Shore, um, we have such a shortage of interpreters and there are not many certified interpreters in this area either. Um, it is difficult to find some, it would be difficult to find a certified mentor, um, but at the same, like to be able to provide that in the school system. But um, I can't, I can't answer, I cannot answer that with absolute certainty. But I know that it is difficult to find interpreters. I know that when I have been ill or I have um taken a day off, it is extremely challenging to find a substitute educational interpreter. So to find an additional interpreter that would be used as a certified mentor to be placed in the classroom, that would be very difficult in uh Western Maryland, um, in rural areas, very challenging. Um, one more thing that just came to mind, this is Vice Chair Puzio. When we think about student internships or interpreters in formal mentoring programs, they also, they don't have full restrictions, but
Mm-hmm.
um, they would have some direct oversight. So like right now, we have two programs in the state that do provide for internships, CCBC, uh, Gallaudet, Bloomsburg University in Pennsylvania. So there are several somewhat locally. But in, in uh Maryland, they would have direct oversight, but there isn't direct oversight with the CASL uh knowledge exam. Um, we, the mentorship, there is no requirement to, for that to be paid work. Um, so you're not paying the mentor and the mentee. So these groups of people um would grow. Um, we're also, like, let's not forget about these certain subgroups.
So this is Chair Lefler. I would propose that we leave the language alone as it stands for now, I think.
Remember Franklin saying yes? Oh, no, are you not proposing? I'm sorry, I was seconding already.
Yeah, I, I was proposing, but not motioning. Uh, so I, I would propose that we leave it as written as it stands now. You know, in regards to provisional licenses and let me gather my thoughts. Interpreters within uh all settings except for medical, behavioral health, and unless they have a mentor, just leave that, those two areas specifically called that, right? Currently as the language is
Wait, you mean that they cannot be in an educational setting or they can?
So as written right now, they can, that's what my interpretation, unless I'm incorrect in my interpretation. Uh, AAG Stone and Strong may be needed for some clarification and advice?
And member Franklin is saying, yes, I suggest that we um seek the guidance of AAG Stone and Strong.
So I think we should hold off in a closed session. We have about 20 minutes left. I'd like to run through these, so let's just hold off on the educational discussion until
Say, hold off on this regulation.
Okay, let me make a note here.
And that was Vice, um, Vice Chair Puzio.
All right, with that said, let's move along to the next section. And I have found it. It's, we're looking specifically at letter F of the MOB's uh lettering. Okay, has everybody had a chance to read this? So that language is just to clarify, because there are some school interpreters uh who are working in other settings. So we want to make sure that there's no conflict of interest between this specific section. Okay, I don't see any opposition to that as stated. Uh, let me check to see if there's any more in regards to their sus- the suspension of their license will be notified.
Jacob.
Yes, Leslie?
This is Vice Chair Puzio. So F, I think, talks about uh informing a school system if the interpreter has a license that's suspended.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, uh, I, let me go ahead and show this real quickly and then we can discuss it a little bit more in depth. Has everybody had a chance to read this one? Okay, same general consent. Opening for discussion. Okay. So before we had 30 working days for ODHH to approve licenses, meaning that that would be one month and a half. We felt that that needed to be reduced down to 20 working days, meaning one month in total. So that's the language as written. And that's really all we have as far as the uh discussion that we'd like to move into a closed executive session on educational interpreting. Is there any other discussion points that the board would like to bring? Any thoughts, concerns, or last minute comments before doing so? None? One moment? So uh again, verify no other comments or questions. So would somebody like to make a motion?
Uh, this is Vice Chair Puzio. I propose to uh during the meeting and um, um, to close session, to move to closed session. And I propose that the board meet in closed session as permitted by the Maryland Open Meeting Act and provisions under Article 3-05B7 and consulting with legal counsel and like for legal advice, advisement.
Mr. Lefler who seconds? I see Sue. Sue's seconding. All in favor, please raise your hands for the closed session motion which passes. We will go ahead and enter into closed session, meaning that the individuals are here. Are we, do they just voluntarily?
This is Vice Chair Puzio. So because we don't want to uh separate into breakout rooms, um, we can separate the interpreters and ODHH and Ethan will leave, we will discuss. And we can rejoin at 7:50. And uh we will rejoin the main room.
Thank you, Leslie, for those logistics.
So that means that all of the community participants will leave the Zoom for right now and you can rejoin. And you do not want to join this breakout room. No, we do not. Tanya, we are not joining a breakout room. This is Vice Chair Puzio. So this is just reminding all of the community members to leave the Zoom and you can wait in the waiting room until um and rejoin after the executive session has completed their discussion.
This is Chair Lefler, yes. Feel free to take a, a quick uh break. Sue, you may want to drop your camera screen as well. Okay, so who is not on the board but uh not part of ODHH and not part of the interpreting or CAPC team? Whoever you are, please leave the room. Please then rejoin the meeting link. You will be in the waiting room and we will then open up uh the waiting room to join the main uh room once we are finished with our deliberations. So please now, everyone leave the meeting if you are not of the ODHH board, interpreting or access team. Is everyone left already?
Uh, there are 21, uh, 23 participants. This is Ethan. So they're all in the waiting room. I was trying, I was just assigning them to the waiting room. I was just forcing it.
Uh, do you want the recording to stop or continue? Start, correct?
Yes, we're gonna allow them in, correct?
So we are gonna wait a few moments just to allow everybody else to join?
Yeah, because we did say 7:50, so we do need to give them the three minutes so that they can rejoin.
This is member Franklin. Uh, I, I agree with that.
I'll be right back. Vice Chair Puzio.
So this is Chair Lefler. I see 7:49 is on my clock, so we will wait one more minute before resuming the meeting. Okay, I see 7:50 on the dot. We are going to open up our meeting again. Thank you for your patience while we had our closed session for legal counsel. So thank you so much, everybody. Now, we will continue our discussion. Uh, we have gone through most of the regulations and We will continue our discussion. Uh, we have gone through most of the regulations and we are going back to the provisional educational license, which we discussed. Would anybody like to open up the meeting uh as it stands now with any comments, motions, et cetera? So just to recap, we were talking about whether or not we would accept the casually written as allowing an individual to work within the educational setting for provisional license. What is the board's thoughts on this now that we have met with counsel?
This is Vice Chair Puzio. Um, I still stand my ground on my thoughts and my beliefs. I do feel that the full intention is if you remember when we first took a look at the specialty areas um in creating the different specialty areas. We were standing by the four point zero for the EIPA because we couldn't um when we were, we did lower to three point seven. And that was a benefit to educational interpreters. But my feelings, I have strong feelings about the students who are deaf. And uh I understand that folks are talking about the reduction in the workforce, but that is not my main concern. My main concern is the language access for these students who are deaf. So I strongly am advocating for the EIPA only or the National uh General Certification. Um, I understand. So I'm basically saying I want to leave the regs as stated currently.
Ms. Chair Lefler, thank you for your statement, uh Vice Chair Puzio. Sue or Paige? Sue?
I do understand Leslie's perspective. And it is a wonderful goal. It is a good goal and that's correct. Um, we should not rely only on the EIPA written. We should be relying on the EIPA performance. And I think that we should uh leave the language as it is in the regulations currently. Uh, supporting. Um, let me back up. So the Casely written. We should not support only a Casely written uh passing. Of course, we can see after, we can see what happens after public comment if we need to make a secondary or an additional revision. The Casely written exam. You can, if you only have a Casely written passing, you cannot work in the educational setting. You cannot. Um, so there, anyone with a provisional general license cannot work in an educational setting. I'm so sorry, my mind is in so many different directions right now.
Yes, I understand. So I'd like to uh maybe recap for provisional license. For general provisional license, they cannot work within legal settings. But for educational, mental health and the and uh medical and education, they would be, okay, so legal and education, they are not allowed to work within behavioral health and medical settings. They are allowed with a mentor who is fully licensed and certified.
That is correct.
Sue? Paige? Yay, name? Sue, you wanted to say something. I'd like to give you the time too.
I'm just gathering my thoughts. Um. I'm on the fence about the mentoring piece because while I think it's a great idea. Um, if we allow someone who has a Casely written passing uh to have a certified mentor. Um, but whether or not that is a reasonable expectation for the educational system, especially in rural areas. Um, I really don't know. I don't know about the larger counties. Um, whether or not they have certified interpreters working there currently, so they can uh embrace or take advantage of those opportunities where they are mentoring. I think the internship piece um is great, but they very rarely come to the southern Maryland areas. It is very rare. So I think in the rural areas, we um we don't, we're not able to benefit from some of these uh opportunities. I think that's a great point. This is Vice Chair Puzio. Um, and this is a great opportunity to contact um certain uh establishments in the rural areas where you can present a uh, an individual that's in an internship or pair them with a um, a core uh interpreter. Um, one of the one of the thoughts I have quickly um of opportunities for mentoring is contacting certain establishments and having meetings with these folks in recruiting their mentors so that they can mentor uh these interpreting interpreters who are not yet certified. Um, but I think for interpreters who want to work. They want to be paid, but I doubt the school system is going to pay for two interpreters when they're only hiring one. Um, when we talk about have, meeting that requirement of having the two interpreters, one being a certified mentor and the other being a provisional holder. Um, but I think this is a good opportunity to perform some outreach in the school systems. This is member Beaver. So maybe we could add the mentoring piece for the educational settings in the regs currently. And then that would then encourage uh that outreach. And see what certain establishments have available as far as promoting um. So when you say a mentoring situation, you mean with a mentor or mentoring with a licensed interpreter? I think for the legal setting, I thought it was both because I thought we mentioned you must have a certified mentor in a legal setting and a mental health setting. No, so.
This is Chair Lefler. I'd like to uh clarify. So for, again, within a legal setting, they cannot work.
You're right. So it's medical or mental health, correct?
Yes, correct. In those two settings. And you are correct in saying that they would be sort of licensed, specifically we need the language license. So the concept is what you're proposing is maybe having the same conceptual framework applied to educational settings. Is that something that we could see a motion for if that's the desire?
I would support an intern and a formal mentor that uh participates in a program. Because the intern and have that for legal or mental health settings. And I would like to see the same for um, an internship. I don't want to see just a a mentorship situation when you have a fully licensed um interpreter paired with a provisional licensed interpreter. Because there are different approaches in mentoring situations. Some are with a paid interpreter and the other, and the educational approach is different. It could be um it could provide guidance, but in one setting it's required and the other it is not required. So I like the idea of the mentoring and the internship piece because that allows for growth and allows the school system to have a way to satisfy the regs. So I think that we could add a mentor participating in an internship program, right? So we would this isn't an educational or no, it it which?
So this is a quick clarification from the chair.
For the educational provisional license, so I'm confused. This is Susan.
Sorry, yes, uh, this is clarification for the chair. We're talking specifically about educational interpreting, not mentioning Casely specifically. For provisionally general license, that's the Casely test. And Leslie seems uh to be very clear on wanting only the general provisional license interpreters to be requiring the Casely set and to working with in mental health or uh medical situations with a team who is fully licensed. And within an educational setting, it would be a mentorship with a formal internship program or for intern with a formal mentorship program in the educational setting. So those are two different things. So one of them is a team and does not require a a mentor, mentee relationship, whereas in the educational setting, that separately want an internship program, formal mentorship as part of said program. Does that clarify that? Component?
Yes.
And now how does the board feel about that thought? Do we agree that that is a different framework that we would like to see?
This is member Franklin. Um, do we need a proposal? Um, I can give it a try. Um, so I propose that we insert language into the regs that requires a formal intern and a mentor uh arrangement in this specific setting.
Is there a second?
We need to go back and fix the language. Because I propose to allow an internship and a formal mentoring program to be present in legal educational settings and then in provisionally licensed individuals are are not permitted uh in mental health except with a mentor.
Okay, uh, do we like to have to further discussion on the motion?
I'm still confused. This is Susan. So when you say a mentor, who, who are they mentoring? A licensed person, a a provisionally licensed person? So in the current law, this is Vice Chair Puzio, we have internships which are accredited internships from an accredited college program. And then we have formal mentorships. Those interpreter, those interpreting students or mentees would be placed in an educational setting with a mentor in a medical setting with a mentor, in a mental health setting with a mentor. Separately, provisionally licensed individuals cannot interpret in legal or educational settings, period. However, but they can interpret in medical or mental health, being mentored by a fully licensed interpreter. And then holding a provisional license. Okay, this is member Beaver. So I understand about the mentoring and the internship program. So neither of them don't or not required to have a license because I thought the regulations was uh requiring some of the, someone who is proficient to be in the mentoring position.
This is Chair Lefler. I think what we can ask for AG to do is provide us some clarifying language later on how to craft that language and stipulations. So Leslie, would you like to make your motion, or rather you did, uh, you made your motion. I saw Paige had seconded. Would we like to proceed with the vote? In support of that promotion of the vice chair of an internship with formal mentoring, uh, allowing those provisional interpreters to work in either legal or education setting with said program established and followed pursuit to that concept. Whereas within a medical or mental health setting. They provisionally licensed interpreter would be required a team who is fully licensed. All in favor? I see all hands in the sent. It seems it has passed. All right. Thank you so much for the robust discussion. A lot of nuances there. So I want to say, you know, the board in regards to the provisionally, provision general license versus the provisional specialty license in education. We are requiring having both the provisional and specialty pro- especially provision like, uh, sorry, let me go back and restate that for clarity. Yeah. Meaning if I were to apply for, so say I would like to be an educational interpreter, I would apply for my provisional license. I would have to apply both for the general license first and then add in the additional specialty area license?
No.
Okay, so I do want to clarify, uh, if we wouldn't mind clarifying that uh motion. Uh, I want to have it on the record.
So the proposed or?
Yes, I want to clarify that we do not require people to have both the provisional general license and and the educational license within the.
No, but if you're fully licensed, then you can work in education.
I'm talking specifically about the provisional license there of the provisional general license.
Oh, okay. Then yes.
So would we like the preventer provisional general license and the provisional educational special license to be required?
If a person wants to work in many different settings. Um, because the provisional license does not allow them to work in an educational setting.
Okay, so let's see, for clarification, we do as a board agree that educational interpreters requiring a provisional license of the educational specialty only, and they would not need an a general license or general provisional license.
If they only want to work in the educational setting, yes.
Okay, so then it seems like we are in agreement on that part.
So this is, this is Vice Chair Puzio. So I just want to um, I know that um I'm on vacation, so again, uh, just for the community, I apologize for my attire this evening. Um, I did have a thought that if an interpreter wants to apply for both a provisional and a provisional educational license, we should offer a discounted fee uh option.
This is Chair Lefler, I agree.
So I think that, do you mind putting up the fee schedule again so that we um, so that we can vote to pass these regs before we close this evening?
Uh, would you like me to take down the regulations? Okay.
Okay. So I propose that if an interpreter wants to apply for both a provisional in general and a provisional in specialty education. They would need to apply for the general license first, pay the three hundred dollar fee. And then let's say um only have uh and an additional fifty dollars to apply for the educational provisional. And the reason.
One moment while I make some notes. Go ahead.
Because I think we want.
Uh, so we should have a second. Does anyone second that before discussion?
Oh, yes, this is Susan. Um, member Beaver, yes, I second.
Okay, proceed with discussion.
This is Vice Chair Puzio. Because I think we can prorate any fee so that if a person, for example, takes the Casely neck uh knowledge exam and then also passes the EIPA and they're in good shape and then they pass the NIC. And then the, those fees can be applied to whatever balance is remaining. And then that can all occur internally with the governor's office of deaf and hard of hearing. Um, to make sure that interpreters are um not taking advantage of the financial s- uh system and space. However, also not find themselves under duress with um having to pay the fees where they um can utilize their skill set.
This is Chair Lefler. Got it? All right. Any thoughts in regards to that uh discussion or the motion as made? See, no, I think we should move to a vote. I see that request. So the motion of the fees for a person who wants to have both a provisional license, uh, provisional general license, provisional educational license, three hundred dollars for the provisional edu- uh, for the provisional general license with the additional multiple monocom fee for educational license. I see that has all passed after calling for a vote. So I think we are finished with the revisions of the regulations unless there are any other uh sections that we need to discuss this evening. Leslie?
I apologize. May I make one more comment? So for the renewal of the two years, that means that we would have to adjust those fees as I apologize. May I make one more comment? So for the renewal of the two years, that means that we would have to adjust those fees as well?
For both provisional licenses, if they're current.
If the person were to renew both, what would the cost be? I think-
Right?
A hundred each, correct?
Well, right now, for renewal of the provisional general license, two years, a hundred and fifty dollars. And for the provisional educational license, it's one hundred dollars.
So then so then maybe reduce that, because if a person wants to renew one, um, possibly one or the other, maybe make one a hundred dollars and the other fifty dollars. But I think that before we vote for the new regulations, we do have to decide what the cost would be for the renewals. Um, what are your thoughts, Paige or Sue? Um, having that be a hundred fifty on one and a hundred on the other?
This is Chair Lefler. If you wouldn't mind a suggestion from the chair, for the renewals, I think both, I would suggest, uh, one hundred and fifty dollars for the renewal of both. Combined.
This is Member Franklin. Um, so currently, what is the fee for the renewal?
Currently, for the general provisional license, the renewal is for two years, a hundred and fifty dollars. Currently, for the provisional educational license renewal for is for one year, or sorry, two years for one hundred dollars, pardon the interpretation. So in this instance, in this instance, I'm suggesting one fifty for both. Leslie?
So then we could also make sure that we separate we separate it, because if a person, for example, um, passes one or the other, or did they decide that they don't wanna work in educate, in an educational settings anymore, then what would be the general license renewal? So the would the renewal for the educational license no longer be there? So then you would split it to be seventy-five each or a hundred dollars each? I would suggest separating it, so the total can end up being a hundred and fifty dollars? Okay, so you would split it as to be seventy-five dollars per?
I think if renewing at the, at, uh, at the same time. Yeah, if renewing at the same time. I, no, no, I'm the chair, Leslie. I can't make a motion.
Yes, yes. Okay, so I propose for the renewal fees for general licenser, right, general licensure be seventy-five, and for, uh, the educational also be seventy-five. And-
See a second for Susan? All right, then we will, I, I guess we can proceed without discussion. All in vote, in favor of the seventy-five each for renewal fees. Motion passes with general assent. So, are there any other sections for discussion? Anyone? Anyone? Leslie?
I propose to approve the regs as edited.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, after the AAG reviews them?
AAG reviews them.
All right, so who seconds that motion?
Member Beaver is seconding.
I saw a member Franklin trying to get there on a quick draw. Oh, well. Okay, so feel free to pick whoever you would like to as the second. Uh, so I'll put, uh, this is, yeah, I'll put Member Franklin and Member Beaver. So all in favor of the regulations passing, now the discussion's had, post AAG review of the said language? General assent. I wanna say congratulations to the board for all of the diligent work in all of these regulation revisions. We do see opportunities for more public comment, uh, upcoming. We're a thirty-day period, so please do expect that, community. Community, please do feel free to read through those regulations once they're posted. We are open to all of your feedback. Please provide your comments on those regulations. We were looking for this, these comments from both hearing individuals, from deaf individuals, from the communities of interpreters of deaf people, and the entire state of Maryland, as well as the deaf blind community. We look forward to all of your comments, and we will post when next we will meet. And when they was, we'll be open for public comment as well. If you have any questions, if the community has any concerns or clarifications, please do feel free to reach out to me, Chair Lefler. You know how to contact the board. It is S B S L I M D at G- one second. Gmail dot com.
At gmail dot com.
Thank you for the clarification. Again, S B S L I M D at gmail dot com. And again, there's a chair I'm happy to meet to discuss any sort of questions, whether it's via VP, Zoom, what have you. We are here uh, to support you, the community, both interpreting community, deaf community at writ large, and we welcome your feedback, comments, et cetera. We are open and looking forward to seeing all those comments soon after the period closes. And with that, I believe we can end tonight's meeting. Uh, and it'll be the end of, uh, probably August, or it'll be end of October, rather, when we, uh-